Or we will. We will call or we'll call to order this work session. We'll accept the opportunity for public comment at this time. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we will move to our first discussion, which will be, we'll turn it over to Margaret for an introduction for any financial related discussion.
Thanks very much. Board of Commissioners had indicated an interest in reviewing and considering a mid-year salary adjustment for Center County employees. And Corey and Ed have put together some financials so that you can take a look at. If you were to go ahead and do something along the lines of a mid-year adjustment, where that money could come from and how much that would, what that would include. So I'm going to turn it over to Corey first because I know they've been working on several different scenarios for presentation to you this morning.
All right. Thank, thank you, Margaret. Everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Sorry, I'm not on video today. My, my network's a little slow. So, yeah, so Ed had pulled together some analysis that basically gets us to where we're at. On the year compared to budget as well as where, where he's sort of projecting things to go. And then basically what he did is he pulled together that budget and then based on a couple set of assumptions, we ran some scenarios. On what the annualized budget impact would be on a half percent, a percent, 1.5% and 2% increments. And then I'm going to let him go over those numbers with you. We did back out the union wages because we, I think, based on our discussion, that would not be part of this consideration. Since that's collectively bargained, but going to let Ed run through those numbers and then we can sort of discuss them again. These are annualized numbers. So this is how it would affect your annualized budget. So depending on when you would make this applicable, you know, we'd prorate that for the 2021 budget. But I'm going to turn it over to Ed to go through some of those numbers.
Thank you, Corey. Yes, what we explained was I took a, the took the total budget of payroll, which is approximately $25.1 million. And I did back out assuming the tax collector wages were, were not, they get their own increase or not. And also backed out the union employees, assuming their, their raise or not raised would be in their union contract. Which then brought my number down to 22 million, 22.1 million dollars. With the assumption that the average rate on the workman's comp was about 1.28%. And also in the social security and Medicare rate. So taking that against the 22.1 million for a half percent raise, it would approximately cost the general fund about $120,000. But I also took it farther and in looking at the reimbursables, for example, domestic relations, which gets reimbursed to 66.6%. And further other grants. And so looking at the reimbursables, the net estimated cost for a half percent raise would amount to about $87,000. If you're looking at the impact of a 1% raise with the net effect of reimbursables, it would be about $174,000. The impact of 1.5% would be about 261,000. And the impact of a 2% raise would be $348,000. And again, like Corey said, this would be based on an annual increase, meaning for the full year.
We do, we do know that because the ADC numbers were changed in our retirement line. That there is money there that was budgeted that will not be used for retirement that could be reallocated for salaries. So that's exactly, it would, it wouldn't change the bottom line of the budget. It would just be a reallocation of those dollars from retirement to salaries.
One note is I did run a report and create one that looks at the current budget and the annual salaries up through May. And the total was about 36.91% of the budget. Which if you're doing the math through May would end up being about 41.6%. So we're definitely on, on point for the, for the budget with the salaries right now.
Okay, thank you, Ed. We've talked about this before. I think we're all interested in looking at a increase. So basically, we've got some options here. So I said, and if we could review the ADC. Where that was and where basically what's the, what's the net savings that we're seeing with the ADC? Does anybody have that readily available?
I do not have official numbers. I was told it was approximately a $500,000 differential. I was not involved in those conversations. I don't know, Corey or Ed, if you have a specific number.
I don't believe we've seen the revised number, but I, I know, Ed, you pulled the, what was budgeted and I believe that was around 2.2 million. So wherever the revised number lands compared to that, is that correct, Ed?
Yeah, the, the budgeted amount for the retirement was 2.2 million dollars.
And I think the new number landed somewhere around 1.8. Is that correct, Mike? Do you recall?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward here, but that, that sounds right. I just wanted to make sure that we had that on the record, so to speak.
Where the 500 would come, the 2.2 versus 1.8, if the 1.8 is where the, the, the decision landed.
Right, right. So essentially what you're saying, Ed, is we do have, you know, if we, and Margaret as well, is if we utilize the savings we're seeing from the ADC. Budget versus actual roughly half a million, that would be able to offset a full annual 2% increase. For all non, non-union employees. And then also factoring in any, any reimbursables in any departments.
Um, yes, based on my calculation, with a 2% increase, with the reimbursables, it'll be about 348,000. So, yes.
Okay.
So ju- just to put that into context, though, the number we'd be comparing that to is the 481. So the total increase would be 481, net of about 133,000 in reimbursables, which would also. Need to be factored into any, any adjustment to the ADC. Because part of that was already going to be recouped by those funds. So, so I think to the extent there's a $500,000 savings, the number we're probably comparing that to is the 481. Which is the total impact before reimbursables, if that makes sense.
It does. Yeah, it does. Okay.
Yeah. So, so I think as long as there's $500,000 savings there, yes, a 2% increase works.
Okay. Is there any feat, any thoughts or feedback on that?
Just want to double check the 41 or 348 numbers that it is for a full year increase.
That is correct. Yeah. So depending on when this would be applicable, there could be less of an impact on the 2021 budget, but that would be an annualized impact.
I'm good. So if we would elect. So if we would elect to basically say, we're, we're going to do a retro 2% increase. Beginning pay one of 2021 through the end of calendar year 2021. That we would have. That we would, from a budgetary standpoint, we wouldn't, we wouldn't see it at a, and we, the, we would have the funds to offset that increase. Uh, which is, I think is appealing at this point when we're talking about. We did not have an increase 2020 over 2021. We didn't have, we, we didn't do a salary increase because we were unsure of the financial status of the county. With the receipt of 31 million in art funds, or I should say allocation, we've received half of it. In addition to the ADC coming in, in addition to healthcare costs being relatively stable. I, I think it would be something to strongly consider in terms of putting this into place. I would, I would think that that would be something. At the very least, doing a mid-year increase of representing essentially a, a step increase. So moving them on the step mid-year, but whether or not doing retro, that's up for discussion.
Some like this would be, if I'm understanding this correctly, what the proposal is, is a cost of living increase. It wouldn't change. It wouldn't move people on the steps.
We're not going to? Okay, we're, okay.
It would just be a, I mean, you can do what, you can do both. You could do either. But I think what we were proposing was just a cost of living increase. And then once the salary study comes out and we have an opportunity to. Look at our salary ranges and steps for classes of employees, then we might make adjustments at that point. But this is kind of a bridge to get us to the results of the salary study.
Okay.
Yeah. And just to echo what Margaret said, if you, if you're going to modify steps, that would be a different calculation. So this would be just a cost of living adjustment with a 2% increase to existing, nothing else changing.
Okay, thank you. Yes, thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Okay, we, we can't take action on approving anything like this during a work session. But is there any further discussion or feedback on this? Do we want some more time to? Or, or do we want to ask any other questions of Ed and Zach so they could crunch some different numbers? Any other feedback?
No, I'm good. I pretty much had it.
Okay, all right.
Corey and Ed could also send you us a one-page. Description summary of the numbers, if that would be helpful, so that you would have them. As a reference point, that might be a good next step here. And the other thing would be that if we want to do, if you elect to do this for July 1. We would need a little bit of ramp up time so that payroll and others can be preparing for that. Because it will require some additional work on that front, especially if it's retroactive. They would gladly do the retroactive work, I might add. But we just need a little bit of ramp up time.
Okay. All right. Any final discussion on this? Seeing and hearing none? Okay, all right. Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Zach. Appreciate it. I'm sorry, Ed and Corey, my apologies.
Would you like us, Mike, to place this on a Board of Commissioners' agenda? Or do you want to revisit this again after you look at the numbers? Would there be a next step?
I think we would want to put it on a Tuesday or Thursday.
Okay.
In the coming days. Absolutely, yeah.
I didn't want to assume, so.
Yeah, I don't know in terms of the timing, but maybe a week or two would be helpful. So once we get the one-sheeter, we can decide when to put it on an agenda for further discussion, possible action.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, all right. Thank you again. Appreciate it. We're going to be going into a discussion of salary study at this point. Is that correct, Margaret?
That is correct.
Okay, super. And we were sent out a few emails regarding this from Kristin. So we do have, I believe, four candidates that we're looking at. So Kristin will turn it over to you for further discussion.
Morning, everyone. Thank you. I sent out to all the commissioners and Margaret, the four proposals we received from Archer. Each East Coast, which management, risk management, which is formerly Felice, JL Nick, and then Moss Deller. Um, so those are the four. I sent you also a email detailing other counties that they have all worked with. Currently or prior. I will say that East Coast, like I said, was previously Felice, so I have had mixed reviews from counties on East Coast. I've had good reviews from other, on the other groups, Archer, JL Nick, and Moss Deller. JL Nick, Moss Deller, and Archer are all around the same price range in the 30 to 40,000 dollar range. East Coast is higher, more up in the $80,000 range as well. So that is where we are with that. I didn't know if you guys had questions on any of the proposals or the samples that they had sent out. And I wanted to know how you'd like us to move forward. If you'd like to meet with any of these groups or if you would like, if there's any in particular you wanted to focus on based on reviewing these.
Okay, thank you, Kristin. Archer would be, just, I'll just jump right in. Archer, I think, just shined the brightest in terms of their application. Also, their supporting documents. They, their proposal was probably the most in-depth. I, I just found them to be the most compelling. They look like they're not, however, a Pennsylvania-based company. They're headquartered, it looks like, in South Carolina. The local rep or their, whoever their interface would be with us is out of Ohio, not a bad thing. But in terms of, my big thing was onsite. Are they actually going to come onsite for this? I couldn't tell whether or not they would.
Or most of their, um, most of their communication will be virtual. Like meeting with department heads and that about the positions in their office, job duties. They do a lot by, all of these companies do a lot by like a survey that they send out about different job titles and duties. And they compile all that data. They will come onsite, especially if you wanted to meet with them, they would make that trip to come up here. And to also do the final proposal, of course, presentation. So they, they do, it's a mix of onsite and offsite. They do a lot of the legwork, I think, virtual. Just because it's easier to compile all that data from everyone that way.
Okay.
I just want to be really clear too. This is not a review, review necessarily of our, the way we are organizationally structured. This is really just to look at, sort of to do some desk audits of people's positions to see what their jo- job duties and responsibilities include. They're not going to be weighing in, and we, we do need this at some point, but they're not going to be weighing in on our organizational structure, correct, Kristin?
Right, this is more.
Maybe we want.
What are, it's more of what our department clerk threes should be making. What should their range be? What's the midpoint for similar positions in the area? Not how many supervisors should they have? Should this department, should they supervise five people or six people? None of that. It's just what the salary and compensation should be.
That's the question for me is do we want both? Because I think we're not right-sized in some departments and we might be oversized and undersized in other places. And so is there a way to get at that at the same time? I don't know.
I don't know if, if we can do it as part of this, it would probably extend the study quite a bit longer in doing that. I don't know.
So just from my review of Archer's plan, under phase one, they do actually do a review of the current organizational structure and reporting relationships. So that's included in their current proposal. And they, let's go down here. That, I, I mean, I don't, again, I don't know how much that, you know, how much they're going to go into detail about that. But they're looking to see when they're, when they're phasing or when that's going to be completed. It looks like the first month or job analysis and evaluation. It looks like it's month two or three that they're going to be working on that. So it's already, it looks like it's already built into the plan. So it looks like we would get a little bit of that benefit.
Yeah, I do think that some of that is part of the evaluations of the positions, like this supervisor, like this department head has 10 people. This department head has 30 people, you know, and factoring that into salary and compensation as well.
I'm really speaking about the next step of that, right? So, yeah, it is that effective management to have somebody supervising 10 people versus somebody, you know, that kind of thing. So I, I, I don't want to muddy the waters here. I just want to point out what it is and what it probably is not.
Yeah, it looks like 95% is, you know, the salary, the, the, you know, pay, et cetera, job duties, titles. But then there is a little carve out for, well, how does every, how does it all work together? Not in a, uh, deep, like a really detailed sense. It looks like they're just going to kind of get a, a feel and appreciation for it.
Yeah, I don't, I think that what Margaret's talking about is more of like a work study, like say. They did that at the correctional facility a few years ago, the HR office, to see how many CEOs we really need to run the full complement. With, with all of our units open, et cetera. They told us approximately how many full-time and how many part-time CEOs, based on the workload and hours. That's like the more of the actual work duty study rather than the salary and compensation. Yeah.
So maybe we could ask Corey, I don't know, Corey, are you still listening?
I am.
DCED has a unit that does organizational reviews. Is that correct?
Uh, I think they have some technical assistance. I'm not sure what level of review. But I know they have programs such as like early intervention program. It was formerly early intervention. Now it's strategic management planning program. That's part of that is to sort of review organizational structure, et cetera. Just to look for opportunities, you know, in this type of environment, if you will. And sort of do benchmarking that kind of thing as more of a broad-based program, not specifically just for structure, but.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
That was just my thoughts on who stood out, but we could certainly talk about and discuss any of the other three. If there's any that, any of their proposals that caught anybody's eye or we thought that they might have offered something different.
I, I also felt Archer's proposal was the best of the batch. I was really not so fond of East Coast. JL Nick's was really short, too short. Moss Deller's looked okay. But it did appear that we'd mostly just be assigned a single staff person. So it, the, the whole review would sort of live and die by that one person. So, yeah, I, I lean toward Archer myself, too.
I'm fine.
Would you like me to set up a meeting where you can speak with the representatives from Archer, the board, and Margaret can ask them questions? Before we put it on an agenda to move forward or would you, how, how would I like to proceed from here?
I have a question about timing before you answer that perhaps. So Kristin. Just review with us what the timing would be if they were under contract with the county by July 1. Would we have the results in time to factor into budget preparation for 2022?
Possibly. Um, I would like, I'm pulling up Archer's timeline here.
Because that's the goal here, you know, is to be in step with the 2022 budget process. In case there are recommendations that the Board of Commissioners would like to pursue, it would be best to do it in the budget process.
I don't, I don't know if they're going to. Looks, it looks like they have a five-month. You know, recommend, recommendations. And final report month five, so.
Right, so if we, I mean, it would be cutting it close if, to get it into the 2022 budget. I mean, it's not impossible, but it would be cutting it very close. They would, I don't know if there's any way we could ask them to accelerate in a four-month. I only bring it up because we don't want to delay this a whole lot longer if you want to move forward, so.
Right, it would be great if, if they started in July and we had final results by November, so that when you approve the budget in December. We could include any things, any changes you wanted to make on that final budget in December.
We really needed.
Remember. Because I'm just saying, because normally you do the preliminary approval at the end of November. So if we had, if they took four months, July, August, September, October, and we had the preliminary results beginning in November. We would be able to make decisions for that budget at the end of November for a final approval in December. Does that make?
I, I think that's, I think that's the closest and, and maybe Ed and Ed should respond to that because I think Ed's going to be crunching those numbers for us, right?
Yeah, that's correct. That's going to be a pretty tight timeline to try and get it in there. I mean, what we might have to do is just build in some contingency in the budget for what you're going to accept. Rather than roll it into the line item budget and then do a, you know, a budget amendment in 2022. Just because at that point, you know, your support schedules, everything's already built up. That's going to be a very short window to get something on the counter and get approval, you know.
But it could be early '22 and there could be a contingency line built in the budget that would be available.
Yeah, that, that's what I think is probably the best approach for that timeline. If there are things that you want to accept, we'd have to build that into a contingency line item within the salaries lines. You know, and then we could roll that out, push it out to the departments as it's enacted in 2022. But that way there's, you know, it's budgeted, but it's just not allocated at that point because all the supporting schedules would have to be updated at that point.
Would it make sense to also, when we send out budget packets, obviously we're going to, you know, if we take action on this. You know, Margaret's going to let folks know, department heads, elected officials know that we're doing this and what that entails, what the timeline is, et cetera. But would we also in budget packets essentially say, you're not going to, there's no, not going to be any requests for additional staff or. Salary bumps or increases basically because we, we can't, we can't be doing a study and then also getting requests from folks. Basically, it's let things run its course in that, in that way. Would that be the best course? I don't know if you've ever been a part of, you know, a budget process with a salary study. Corey or Ed, has that come across?
Yeah, typically not like this far into the budget process. So usually you have the study that you're, you know. Because salaries are one of the first things that you're trying to nail down. It's such a big part of the budget. So I mean, we'll have to make some assumptions that if we're not going to make changes other than, you know, maybe to accept recommendations later on. I think we roll with budget salaries as is, you know, we'll update all the benefits information and those kind of things and those costs. But, you know, the assumption will be, you know, salaries increases are X or whatever you want that to be. And then we'll have different scenarios that we can have some contingency set aside for, you know, what you ultimately decide to do with them.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, perfect world, we could start this beginning of the year, but I think it, the time is of the essence unless others disagree. Mark or Steve, if you disagree, you know, we want to hold off on it, but I think we have to, you know, we, we have to start it and, and work it in.
I think we just need to find how far they can get into it before, before we get into our budget process. We can deal with it either way. It's not, not a huge issue either way. I mean, we've gone, we've limped along this many years. If we need to go a little longer, then so be it. If we need to adjust it next year, so be it. But we got to get started. Let's get the salary study done.
I agree. We, we should get started as soon as reasonably possible.
I can contact Archer for, you know, official proposal, contract, et cetera, to get put on an agenda or would you like to meet with them first? Because I know we have to have Betsy review them and that usually takes a little bit of time.
Yeah, the only question I had for them that they didn't address in here was, it looks like, and, and, you know, nothing against them for doing this. This looks like it's a standard thing that they would have done, maybe just changed our name, you know, the name of the county. But the one thing that I just would be curious about is obviously the job market is going to be extraordinarily fluid over the next several months. So they're going to be doing a job or a salary survey during, you know, a very interesting time. This isn't, this is probably. You know, it's a very interesting time. They're doing a salary study in terms of the labor market and what it looks like, our ability to recruit and folks. So if they go out, my, my big question with them is how are they going to? Because if all of a sudden we've got major employers changing their benefit package, changing their salaries or there's incentive bonuses out there. We want to be able to basically make decisions with the, as, as, as current data as possible. And if things are shifting and we're seeing employers putting, you know, incentives out there. We want to make sure that we're just being as, we don't, we don't want to stale study as soon as, as soon as it's given to us. So I just would be curious about what their approach is on that. Again, nothing against them. They put in an RFP. It's fairly boilerplate, but I'm just curious about how they will, how they would do that. I don't know if that, that's my big thing. I don't know if that necessitates a, a meeting with them. But I think it would be a huge part of this, this study, I think, so.
I can definitely pose that question to them, how they're going to approach this with the changing market and everyone looking at salaries, incentives. Unemployment, things like that. I can check with, I can ask them what their answer and send that answer back to you. While also requesting, you know, contract information and such that would go to Betsy and Margaret, if she'd like.
From my standpoint, that's fine. I don't know if anybody else would want to meet with them or have any other questions they'd like to address.
I think before we get started, we should meet with them, absolutely.
Well, I think they build in an intro, are they, you know, they have a. Well, I think they build in an intro, are they, you know, they have a um
Yeah.
uh you know.
Like a kickoff meeting.
Yeah.
And an introductory kickoff meeting after they're under contract.
Right. Would you want to meet, would you want to meet with them before we we uh, make it official, Steve?
No, I think before we actually get moving on there, they they actually uh, get started, I think we need to have a kind of a knowledge of what they're you know, what our expectations versus theirs are.
That's, they do that the very first. They meet with county management. They go over what your objectives are, what your concerns are. Um, they explain their system to you, what they use for classifying. Um, they go over what your vision is, what your expectations are, what sort of deliverables you want from this. They'll sit down and talk with basically the four of you, um, the board and Margaret, and discuss all of this, so.
Okay, Mark, any questions or uh, need for a meeting before we contract?
No, I mean, Kristen's done some good research here. We've got four companies that specialize in this type of work, especially with county municipal government. She's checked the references. Uh, appears we all agree that at least on a proposal basis, there's one company that kind of stood out, so.
Okay, so I think we've got a consensus just to start the contract review with them and uh, and again, that timeframe and would, you know, nailing down, I I appreciate they have month, one month, two, et cetera, but if they could start to say, look, if you sign on the dotted line, June X, we could start, we could be zooming, zooming it up on certain dates, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will, I will check.
We can expedite this contract with Betsy's review, too, Kristen. Um, if we can get it from them, you know, like, right away, we can get this moving.
Sure. And I will, um, also talk to Gillian and Natalie about early dates in July for them to meet with you. Like what availability is, so I can let Archer know about that, too, so we can really hit the ground running as soon as, you know, as soon as we get that contract signed. I can do that.
That sounds good, Kristen. I do see, I mean, uh, is there any Margaret thoughts now on who the project team would be, or is that still, is that, is that the next step now to think about who might want to be a part of that?
I think that's the next step now, um, that we have uh, support from the board, is uh, to to identify who would be on that team. So, and we can do that while we're waiting for the contract uh, documents from uh, Archer and uh, have that ready to go as well. And if you've got recommendations of people that you'd like to see on it, um, please let me know.
Okay. Okay. All right. Anything else on the salary study conversation? Okay, all right. Any other?
I just want to say thank you very much. You know, we've talked about this for quite some time, and it's great that we're underway, and so appreciate the uh, support of the board on this.
Absolutely, yes.
And then just for the record, uh, this, would we be pulling this out of uh, how this be funded?
Good question.
I know I have money in my budget currently from some, I have some salary money um, because of Samantha having been working in elections, so I would have some money available there. I'm not sure I have enough to cover the full cost, so.
Okay, well, I I just, I just was curious if we, maybe, maybe we have enough leftover from the uh, ADC.
I think we'll, I think we'll ask Cory and Ed for some suggestions. Maybe that we have some vacancy balance money as well, because we tend to have that. We have a lot of vacancies right now, but um, that's kind of an aggregate perspective, so I I.
Yeah, we we can take a look at some funding options, and Kristen, we'll get with you just to see how much of it you think you might be able to cover, and then we'll, we'll get some options for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Well, we will host the the project under the uh, Human Services Department, and we may have to add money into your department, Kristen, so.
Human Resources, I absolutely.
I mean, human resources. What am I saying?
We know what you meant. We know what you meant.
Human Resources, Human Services, Kristen and Krista, we get mixed up all the time.
Um, it is challenging, all these K's.
Okay, all right. Anything else on the salary study? We're all good there? Okay, anything else to discuss, or those were the two items we wanted to tackle this morning, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, anything else to come before the board, before we look to adjourn the work session this morning? Hearing none. Okay, none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at 9:40.
Second.
Any final discussion on adjourning? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjourning, do so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, everybody.